Good evening. The appointed time has arrived. The chair opens the February 7th, 2024, meeting at the Mashpee Planning Board here at Town Hall in the Quay Room 16, Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. Time is 7:00 PM. Everyone is welcome here tonight. We're being broadcast live on local Channel 8 and streamed live on the Town of Mashpee website Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Karen, just before we do, can you ask Ed to mute his computer?
What's that?
To mute his Zoom. I can hear him typing. Sorry, he stood up. I'll get to it in a second.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What I was saying, Karen, is would you ask Ed to just mute his Zoom while he's typing?
Ed, will you mute your Zoom?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I believe it. I'm sorry. I believe my Zoom.
Oh, you know what? It's the phone.
But I'll mute. I'll mute my phone.
That'll work.
Oh, the phone. Okay. Thank you, Ed.
Thanks, Ed.
Next, we have two sets of minutes. We have the January 3rd minutes of the meeting. We have them here. Does anyone have any edits or changes? No? Do I hear a motion?
Can I wait? I'm sorry. I read the latter ones. Just let me look at something on the 3rd. Yep, I'm fine.
Okay. Does anyone have any issues?
No.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Don't hate.
To accept both the January 3rd and the January 17th?
No, I just do one at a time.
Oh, sorry.
Any objections?
I second that.
Aye.
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 Okay. Pass. The second one is January 17th minutes of the meeting. This is a very long one. Any changes or edits?
Maybe we should take some time on these. Now that you said they're very long, I'm like, can we put these?
We want to defer this till next time.
The next one, yeah. I mean, I look, you know, I usually make sure like all the votes are right. But now that you said they're very long, I'm like, okay.
All those in favor of deferring the decision on the minutes of the meeting of January 17th, 2024, until our next meeting, which will be February 21st?
I'd move that motion.
Second?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you, Karen.
Okay. Now we come to public comment. Is there anyone here who would like to say anything? Okay. Next, we have. Here's my cover here. One second here. New business.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry. Approval A and R. Approval not required. The applicant is New Seaberry Homes LLC. The location, 17 Azalea Lane. Maps slash parcels, 116-74-00 and 110-8-0. This is a request for reendorsement of a plan previously accepted by the Planning Board as approval not required. The Land Court has requested that certain information be added to the A and R plan, such as plan title change, new lot numbers reference the Land Court plan number of all abutting lots, showing the opposite side of Red Brook Road, certain dimensional criteria, labels, and updates of the field survey date. Additionally, Land Court has requested setting bounds in two locations. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Madam Chairman. For the record, my name is Kieran Healy. I'm a land surveyor with the BSC Group. The explanation you have covers everything. The primary change was that when we submit plans to the Land Court, they don't give us the lot numbers in advance, but we need signature from this board before we can submit. So we have to come back to this board once we get the revised numbers from the Land Court.
Okay. Very well. I'm going to ask you to point out to us, because I only had a little piece of paper to look at, and I couldn't see some things. Now I've got a big piece here. The first one was to change the plan title to reflect case number 114008-219. I see that on the corner there.
Yes.
That's visible.
Yeah.
Number two is make lot numbers 1947, 1948, and 1950.
Those were in the middle of.
I didn't see 1950. Is that visible? I see the. Could you point that out to us? The 1948 is where you see Azalea Lane. Just look up at that skinny little.
Yes.
Road there. It's 1948.
I believe it's 47, 48, and 49. We created three lots, not four.
It said make lot numbers 47, 48, and 1950. I'm looking for 1950.
All right. We don't have a 1950. It's 47, 48, and 49. Yes.
Okay. So take that 1950 off as 49.
Yes.
That was just a typo, I guess?
I guess, yes.
Is that the cover letter?
Pardon me?
Is that the letter?
It says 1950 on the page. Yeah. Okay. Number three is add reference to the LCP plan number of all abutting lots. Could you tell me where that is?
That's basically on some of the others. We added the Land Court number on those.
And what am I looking at?
Right in where it says now or formerly for the abutting properties.
Oh, LCP. Okay. What does LCP stand for?
Land Court Plan.
Land Court Plan. And then show the opposite side of Red Brook Road. That's right there. Add the cords with bearings for each lots curved segment along Azalea Lane.
Okay. So if you look at the frontage on Azalea Lane, you'll see the radius and the arc length. But then you'll also see a bearing and distance, which is the cord length from corner to corner.
Okay. These columns here.
If I could show you right.
Yes.
This bearing and distance on all three.
Okay. Oh, I got it. It's the cords. So there are three cords?
Three frontages and three cords, yes.
Okay. Label the easement as proposed. Proposed easement.
Correct. That's in the middle. That's lot 1948 in the middle.
I see it. Oh, there are. Let's see. Let's see. Proposed use easement. Proposed use easement. There are two of them?
If you look at the driveway access there, that proposed 20-foot access and utility easement.
I see two proposed easements. Is that what?
There's the proposed use easement on, sorry, proposed access easement to 1948, and there's the proposed use easement on the back property.
I got it.
Lot 52.
And set bounds in two locations.
Correct. One on the left-hand side behind the pool deck and one on the right-hand side at an angle point in the property line.
You show me where that is?
Right there.
The first one is just to the left of the pool right here.
Okay.
And the other one is on the other side in the middle of the pool.
It's a little square.
And the update, the update the date of the field survey. Would that be the most recent date?
Correct. Yes. Our original field survey was done back in 2020. So we were required to go back out and check the monuments to see they were in the same position.
Would this be 11524?
Yes.
The update. Okay. Okay. So do I hear a motion?
Mary?
Yeah. I make a motion that we reendorse this plan as an approval not required with the updates as requested by Land Court.
Okay.
Second?
Second? How many say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You have to sign it?
Yes, please. Right there.
Get the top one.
I'm going to put the date on.
Date on. 27, I believe. Thank you, members. Thank you.
Thank you.
Aye. See you.
Next, we have new business. Review of draft zoning article intended to authorize indoor recreation facilities in the I-1 zoning district and possible vote to submit to the Select Board for consideration on the May 2024 town meeting warrant. This is the pickleball matter that this has generated. This is the warrant that our town planner drafted. He wants to do, as you recall from last time, a pickleball court in industrial when it's only allowed at this point in time, a pickleball interior indoor recreation facility in the commercial zone. So this would change the warrant or amend it such that it would be allowed in the industrial by special permit. Do I hear a motion?
Yep. I make a motion that we recommend the Select Board, that we submit this to the Select Board for consideration for the next town meeting warrant.
Second?
How many are for this?
I am. I'm proud of it.
Aye.
Aye.
Pass. Okay. 6B is request to release the performance guarantee securing construction completion for the project referred to as the cottages at New Seaberry Phase 3, Oceanfront Subdivision, and also the performance bond for the cottages at New Seaberry Phase 4. We don't have to all look at this because the town planner and I have gone over it in detail. The first one is Phase 3 at New Seaberry, and they are looking for a release in total, in its entirety, of $1,009,620. May I have a motion?
Do you want Ed to give his report to the board first?
Oh, yeah. Of course. Ed, do you agree? Well, can I?
Let's have him give the report on it, on the request.
Do you agree that that is a correct number and that all work has been completed?
So, Madam Chair, I'll make it easy for you overall.
Okay.
They've requested release of a lot of funds, basically all the funds that are held for the Oceanfront Project and the cottages at New Seaberry Phase 3, all the work. And I quite late in the day sent a letter to this effect to the board.
We're looking at it.
Okay. This basically says that everything for the first two projects is complete and acceptable. They've made a few changes. I did a few inspections. They've done the things that I've asked them to do to bring various items up the coast. So we're in good shape there. So I recommend all the funds they're requesting for the Oceanfront Coastline Drive, also known as the Fairway Home to Seaside, that project and the cottages at New Seaberry Phase 3, all that funds, all those funds be released. On the cottages at New Seaberry Phase 4, they have submitted a letter explaining, well, the letter included all three projects, but the letter explains that they would like to have a number of the things that were held that are now completed. They'd like to release all but two items that aren't complete. They certainly agree, were on complete agreement there, that the paving top course and some additional catch basin cleaning that we do just before turning the project over and closing it down, closing it out. So all the construction debris and sand and silt that's collected in the catch basin during construction gets removed, and the drainage system starts fresh like it was designed and intended to be. And they agree with that. I did add one more recommendation to the list that I briefly discussed with the group, and that was a final as-built plan. We typically require a final as-built plan for subdivisions and for other projects. And they have the ability to do that on this project. So I recommend that we request that they do that as well. And I added a small amount into the total, as you can see on my front page there, the amount of $6,000 for the total. And resulting in the overall total record amount to be held, $185,100 versus the $176,100 that they had requested. So that's the only difference. Everything else, we're on the same page about.
Okay.
And subject to your questions, that's really all I have.
So actually, on that Phase 4, Ed, it would be, the amount that would be paid over to them would be $1,418,280 minus So it would, you know, we'd have to do the math there. It's not going to be 12, $1,242,180. It's going to be, right? $1,418,280 minus 185?
I would just suggest that if you accept Ed's recommendation to take a motion to reduce the guarantee to 185,100.
Okay. All right. Let's take a motion now.
So, all right. So we have Phase 3 and Phase 4.
Correct.
Right?
Right.
And Ed, did you get your as-built for Phase 3?
So we have drawings for Phase 3. Phase 3 was done some time ago, many, many, you know, several years ago. And so we actually have plans for Phase 3. I wouldn't call them complete as-built plans, but they're certainly acceptable record plans to show where all the infrastructure is.
So you're comfortable with us
Yes.
releasing Phase 3? And I think we would do that in a separate vote from Phase 4, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Separate votes.
So I, what number are we releasing for Phase 3?
Phase 3, we are releasing $1,009,620.
Okay.
I think you're finding that the construction is complete and you're reducing the bond to zero.
Because it is. It's complete.
Okay.
There's nothing left to do.
Okay. So I make a motion that we accept the board's engineering report and reduce the bond of Phase 3 to $0.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes.
All right. Now, Phase 4. We want to condition the release on a as-built being provided to our town engineer.
The cost fee was $185,100 to be held. Right?
So you'd be reducing the value of the bond to 185,100, inclusive of an additional, I believe, $6,000 for the production of an as-built plan.
Okay.
I make a motion. And for Phase 3, that we reduce the bond amount to $185,100.
Phase 4, Mary. Apologies.
I make a motion for Phase 4 to reduce the bond to $185,100 on the condition that we receive an as-built plan.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 So I made the motion. Dennis, you seconded it, right? Okay.
Okay. Passes. Last one, Oceanfront Subdivision Coastline Drive.
Is that all done?
Well, we didn't vote on it yet.
I thought we only had two.
We have three. The last one is Oceanfront. The applicant, the $65,000. I have a different number from originally, but the amount you have is $65,148.50 that we could release.
Correct. You took in a guarantee for this project on June 5th, 2013, in cash for a $422,773.50, which was reduced in October of 2014 to $105 and change, and further reduced again in December of 2015 to the $65,148.50, which is the value I have on record in Town Hall. So that is the value that I have. We are retaining, and the request is to reduce that amount further to zero.
Take a motion.
Oh, wait. So that's Coastline Drive. Ed, I'm sorry. Can you let me know if Coastline Drive is all done to your satisfaction?
Yes. Yes. That is also one that I inspected that was done way before Phase 3. And we walked around the site, did a full walk-around inspection of the site. It's 100% complete. And I got some more documentation from them as well.
Okay. I make a motion that we reduce the bond for the Oceanfront Subdivision Coastline Drive to the amount of $0.
Second?
Oh, and that we accept the engineer's report?
And, yes, in total. Yes.
Okay. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
No, it shouldn't pass this.
Thank you, Ed. I know that's a lot of work. You make it just seem so easy.
Yeah. And kudos to the folks from New Seaberry. They were very cooperative and helpful to work for, work with, both Cameron Joyce and Nick Galanos. I appreciate working with the both of them.
Thank you, Ed.
And of course, we still have work to finish on Phase 4. We're not quite done with Phase 4. So we still have a little work to do.
Okay. Very well. Thank you. Old business. Mike is not here, so he's not going to do the presentation for the LCP. So we will, could we move that? Do you know if he's going to be here next time?
I don't, but know what his plans are for the 21st. And Dale was also supposed to make a report to discuss matters in the implementation table. I think I would appreciate if the board would consider having another special meeting to go through that stuff.
Okay.
I have a consideration for you.
Yeah.
The Department, the Natural Resources, I think we can get through with what we have here.
Okay.
The municipal buildings, facilities, and services, have you read it?
Mm-hmm.
I think it's chaotic. I think it needs more work.
Okay.
I think it needs more professional work from you and the consulting, the consultant.
Okay.
I really couldn't make heads of tails of it.
Okay.
There were very specific things, like down to the nitty-gritty, and then like huge things.
Okay.
And I, municipal buildings, facilities, and services is like really big topic, right? Because, I mean, it's almost like I need a list of what those are. Because services are like when people come into Town Hall, right?
Mm-hmm.
Isn't it police and fire?
Sure. Yeah.
So I don't know if we have their draft chapter on this that would actually list what falls under this chapter? Because I was getting kind of confused.
Sure.
Is there a chapter written on this yet?
Yes.
Well, maybe if we could see the written chapter.
Yeah.
Then we could compare it to these.
No problem.
Okay.
And like I didn't really see, like I saw a reference to the new fire station on the north end of town, but I didn't see anything about the current facilities. Do you know what I mean? And their staffing levels. Because it's service. It's a, this is a huge chapter.
I make a recommendation that we get the written language as we have with economic development and the other, some of the other categories. We read that carefully and we review this. And then we come back with our issues.
Fine.
Yeah. It's going to be a good chapter. There's a lot in there. It's almost just like an organizing thing.
Sure.
You know? It needs to be digested a little more.
No problem.
So could we, when could we get that chapter?
I can send it tomorrow.
Okay.
I have some, I'm wait, I've had to update these chapters.
Yeah.
Because so much time has lapsed.
What are you talking about?
For data. In fact, like, for example, libraries converted three part-time employees to three full-time employees.
Okay.
DPW fleets have changed. So I'm going through the motions of updating that data. So I'm awaiting a few comments from Catherine on this specific chapter. But I'm going to provide it to you tomorrow But I'm going to provide it to you tomorrow with the caveat that I haven't received full comments back from Catherine.
Well, do you want to wait then till you get it?
I'd like to put your eyes on it, truthfully. I want to make sure we keep moving forward. So I'm going to send it to you in the morning.
Okay.
Right, and I think there's been a lot more attention paid to the capital plan, right? Because it has to come to a town meeting. They, they, somebody read the charter really, or the administrative code real carefully. Like, oh, this is supposed to go to the town meeting. So I don't know if this has been looked at compared to our capital plan. I don't know if they call it, I don't know what they call it.
Yeah, CIP, yeah.
Because I know Catherine will have some comments, but I think that the fire and the police, they put in requests in the capital plan, it's a five-year plan, and I haven't seen it. And I don't know if that's all been captured in here, or could be under a kind of a general, you know, thing.
Okay.
Does that sound good?
That does sound good.
Okay. All right, so we don't need to vote on this. We just agree that we'll get the printed thing. Do we have anything else that we want to get? Is the natural resources, has that been done already?
Oh, yeah.
And the transportation and circulation?
Done.
Well, do you want to give us all that?
Yeah, and in fact, I think I did provide you the chapters.
I didn't get that.
It was in the two packets ago, maybe. I'm providing them to you as they come.
We have some, but...
That's too bad.
I don't, yeah, so I don't have every chapter.
Okay.
One hundred percent complete. I have, I'd say, fifty percent of the chapters, and I'm providing them to you iteratively as we go.
Okay. So can we agree that we'll take these up next meeting, provided that
We have time.
People are here.
And energy.
Yeah.
That's going to be a big deal.
Well, we're gonna have a...
Oh, you want to do a special one?
I need the energy. I really want to get this to the town meeting in October.
Okay.
How is the, how's the sustainability chapter coming?
Sustainability chapter is lacking, I think, discussion relative to solid waste management. So I think that's a point of discussion that we need to bring in, something I'm talking about with Catherine as well. I'd say the implementation table is solid as it sits, but I think it's missing important components.
I gave you that stuff. Did you look at that thing I gave you?
I don't remember what you gave me, Mary.
Okay, I'll email it to you.
When you're looking at that, I hope you look at the sewer system, the sludge, to get rid of it. Because they're having a problem now.
It's gonna be an issue, is an issue.
To get rid of it, so that should be in that plan to make sure.
Yeah, so I think there's a piece missing in the sustainability chapter.
Yeah, I'll send it to you again. I don't, I don't know if these consultants have done a sustainability chapter, but when I started reading other people's sustainability chapters, we're really missing a lot.
Yeah, I think there's pieces missing.
And, and of course, this is based on, you know, our survey, our public comment. You know, our consultant and you are supposed to fill in those gaps, but there's some standard things in sustainability chapters that aren't in ours. And I'm like, ooh, we're right on the coast, like. All right.
Well, mostly for coastal resilience, it makes specific reference to our MVP plan.
Right. And we just did the Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Correct.
Which is really good, but it's almost like some of those should be somehow referenced in the, in the implementation chapter.
Okay.
I did read the Hazard Mitigation Plan, and it was excellent.
Good book, yeah.
And unfortunately, I didn't read it in time, because the public comments were December twenty-second, and I was like in January that I read it.
I will still take your, it is in, it's on MIMA right now for review. That one took a substantial amount of editing. A substantial amount of editing, so I'm happy you're pleased with it.
Yeah, it was, it was...
It was a lot of work.
It's really good. It's, it's, I mean, not like the last one wasn't, but this one is just super-duper. So it was worth all that time.
Okay, moving on to Town Planner Report, Harbor Management Planning Committee.
I, they did meet recently.
Oh, wait, you did Board Engineer Report. You skipped.
Was there anything, oh, I'm sorry, Ed, I beg your pardon. Is there anything more you have to update?
All I was going to let the board know was that I do have a meeting in the morning with Catherine, the DPW Director, and Mr. Moran out at Aquway Highlands. We're going to take a look at the drainage system out there and talk about the upcoming spring maintenance events that he's planning to do.
Great.
Okay.
So there are a couple areas that are showing...
It'll be in our thoughts, Ed.
There are showing some areas, there's some areas showing evidence that need some, some maintenance. Catherine brought it to our attention, and I set up a meeting for tomorrow at noon, and I'll be down there to do that.
Okay. Anything else?
And, and that's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you. Apologize for that, Ed.
No worries.
I have nothing on water quality issues.
I do have two announcements.
Okay.
About water quality. Is it UMass Dartmouth is coming on Monday to the Board of Selectmen?
I have no idea.
The Select Board meeting.
I just don't know.
Yeah, so that big report from SMAST, is that what it is?
Mm.
The, the people that study our water at UMass, they're coming on Monday to the Select Board meeting. So everybody tune in. That, that's, that will be pretty important. And then...
What time that's?
That starts at six-thirty, but I haven't seen the agenda yet, so I don't exactly know. But they come and do slides, and they do the water quality.
But that's really part of Brian Howe.
Yes, that's Brian Howe's legacy department. Yeah, and then on Thursday, this Thursday at two.
Okay, yeah, the sewer.
The Association to Preserve Cape Cod, Andrew Gottlieb's executive director, he's coming to talk about the Pond and Waterways Report that they put out, so.
Okay, thank you.
So Sewer Commission tomorrow at two, and then Monday, six-thirty with the Select Board.
Very good. Harbor Management Planning Committee update.
I don't have a report. They did, the committee did meet recently, but I had a conflict and couldn't attend, so I don't have a report this evening. Perhaps Dale can report.
Housing Production?
Housing Production Plan, so I have a revised draft with an executive summary that I'm preparing to issue to everyone for public comment. I did upload it to the website today. It is not live yet, but I'm going to provide you the link in the morning so that you can begin consuming it. I've drafted a press release to send to the enterprise to advertise a public comment period, which I am proposing to open on Monday and stay open for three weeks until March.
Monday, which is?
The twelfth, I believe.
February twelfth.
Twenty-twelfth.
Through March sixth, three weeks. And so three-week comment, we'll compile any comments received. The Affordable Housing Committee will meet in March, which, at which time we would present those comments to them, provide them an opportunity to make any suggested edits in accordance with the comments received. We would make those changes and then formally submit that draft to this board and the Select Board for hopeful adoption at your second meeting in March.
Okay.
Along with the Select Board's second meeting in March. So look out for your emails from me tomorrow. I'm going to leave the link, I think, private until the comment period opens. You can obviously share that link with individuals, but until the comment period is live, I don't want to make it live on the website.
Okay.
But if anyone asks, they can receive it from my office with certainty. And so, yeah, that's it. I'm hoping we can shut the door on that plan mid to late March.
Very good.
I will further note that our grant from the commission is fully closed out, and we were fully reimbursed for that process.
Agreed.
So that was great, and then, so thank you to the CPC for the rest of that money. And then just lastly, I put in your packet, the Attorney General's approval of your October twenty-twenty-three.
I'll go through that, because I'm going to cover a few more points.
Approval, so go ahead, man.
This was a letter from the Attorney General to Debbie Kay, dated January seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four. They approved Article Two, Three, and Floor. They approved the floodplain bylaw with no fill. They approved the accessory dwelling where the owner can only rent out either the ADU or the primary, but not together. And they approved the ADU Article Four, which is the ADU size cannot be less than three hundred and fifty square feet nor more than nine hundred square feet. Article Six was the tree bylaw. And in Article, Article Three is the accessory dwelling, only, only rent one at a time. The Article Three, they told us on page two, where you see the highlighted words, "The use of land or structures for an accessory dwelling unit under this paragraph shall not require owner occupancy of either the accessory dwelling unit or the principal dwelling." There's going to be, they're going to try to pass this at the state level, which would vitiate our amendment. So I think what we're going to do is we're going to go forward to get approval at town meeting on our amendment, our, our article, and then if the state passes, then we have to amend, to delete it, or...
Well, you're, the Attorney General approved your last amendment. They're just noting that the state is contemplating changes that would negate this requirement.
So this might have a short life.
So if, if that would occur at that time, I would suggest doing a housekeeping article to be consistent with state.
Which is, what is a housekeeping article?
Oh, just a, we would make a minor modification to the zoning bylaw.
Okay, modify it, yeah, okay. And then...
So the Affordable Homes Act, right, was submitted by the Governor's Office to the legislature in September. September or October, right? And in that, there's that provision to, to disallow any owner occupancy requirement for ADUs. However, there is a provision in the Homes Act to set up seasonal communities, such as Cape Cod and out in Western Mass and the Berkshires, where there's a lot of seasonal housing, like, I mean, on an average, in, the whole Cape is thirty percent. Thirty percent of our housing stock is used only seasonally. So there's been, our ADU bylaws are designed to kind of protect us from short-term rentals, you know? Vacation, like vacation homes in the middle of residents, residential neighborhoods. So there could be a provision passed that we would be, we would get special, I don't know, relief from ADU, what they want to pass at the state level about ADUs, because we're a seasonal community.
Okay, well, we'll wait and see what happens until we go forward at town meeting.
I don't know if anybody's approached Town Hall on that.
And then, the last one on the tree preservation bylaw. We, our plan was to, it's a revenue account, and we deposit any money that we get from, you know, the tree bylaw into a fund, into the Town General Fund, and then each town meeting, we move that money out for purposes of, you know, tree beautification on public land and so on. We're not going to be doing, from what I'm reading here.
A revolving fund.
This, what do they call it, a...
A revolving fund.
A revolving fund. That seems so complicated. So it's just easier just to take that money gathered during the period before.
Well, the, in, in this case, and this is what the accountant had to point out when we first drafted the article, the tree, any fund created for the specific purpose can't carry over year over year to be used for that purpose. It's, at the end of every fiscal year, we're going to do an accounting of that fund, and town meeting will have to be asked to appropriate those funds for those activities. So the Attorney General is just saying, we approve this, just be sure that the, that the money is appropriated annually and not into a revolving fund. So they are affirming what the town accountant had called out.
If it's appropriated, does it mean it has to be put to use each and every, at this end of fiscal year after it's appropriated? Do we have to use that money to plant, buy trees and plant trees for the town, or can that money?
Be appropriated for something else?
No, not as something else, but just with, not, not utilized, maybe, because it's not...
Put it in the bank, like, and I would...
Yeah.
I mean, I think so. I think the only, the illegal part of this would have been if we were to carry over the funds and spend them without appropriation.
Is it for something else?
Correct.
Okay.
Any specific financial-related questions, though, I would defer to the town accountant. I'm not an expert in that regard.
Okay. So...
The one thing, if I may...
The money coming in first, right?
And the reason I wanted to specifically report to you about the AG's approval is because the tree bylaw is now active.
Yeah.
And so we've developed application forms, we've developed, you know, the internal paperwork, more or less, to effectuate the program. But I am intending on asking for a month grace period to do a press release to, and hold a workshop and write some guidance documents for builders and developers and begin enforcing the provisions of the tree bylaw in March. Similarly to how we dealt with the jurisdictional increase for the Conservation Commission, my office needs a little bit of time to educate folks appropriately. So the bylaw is on the books. I'm finalizing the details of a press release now for the newspaper with plans to provide that guidance to the Building Department and to developers and to have a workshop, should it be attended, between now and, say, early March. So I'd like to have a four-week grace period to begin enforcing the provisions of the tree bylaw.
Do we need to vote on that?
No, I don't think so. I just want to let you...
I think we'll agree.
I'd like to let you know, yeah.
It's just, you've got so many things on your plate right now.
And so we're very, very close, but I think the, the one thing I don't want to have happen is, you know, folks coming in to... I don't want them to be caught off guard when they make an application. And so...
Are we going to put a notification on the website on that?
Oh, yes, yes, so we're going to set up a new page on the Town, on the Planning Department page relative to the tree bylaw, where you can access the application forms, where we'll include the guidance documents and some information relative to process. We just need a little bit of, a little bit more time to get it all put together.
So you're going to contract contractors to, like...
To monitor and enforce?
Well, tell them what's coming down the pipe, you know, like, you know, landscapers and...
Oh, yeah, that's, that's the intention. That's why I want the grace period.
Yeah, so they can tell the owner, hey, there's new laws, you know, they can also help you get that.
Okay. Board Member Committee reports. Cape Cod Commission?
Cape Cod Commission is working on their regional housing strategy. They are visiting the Yarmouth Community Housing Committee and making a public presentation. So I'll send you that link, because that will be to send out to the board, because it's on Zoom, so you can tune in, and that's Monday. It's, it's an early meeting. It starts at three. So that's what I have about the Cape Cod Commission.
Charter Review?
Charter Review meets tomorrow night. We're going to vote on our town meeting warrant recommendations and articles, which include a hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of funding an open space and rec plan. Five hundred and, five hundred fifty thousand dollars for the purpose of funding the Asshument Pond Restoration and Rehabilitation Project, which includes an alum treatment for Asshument Pond. And boy, has DNR Ashley Fisher done a great job. She's right in there negotiating with the military to get us funding. What happens is we pay out for the services, and the federal government has pledged to reimburse us fifty percent. So that's great. The next one is, you know, we're working on buying some land off of Route one thirty by Picaril Cove, but we don't have a dollar figure yet. So we're thinking of submitting an art, like a placeholder to the Board of Selectmen, so if we can get the appraisal done and negotiate a price for the town to offer it, we're all set and we can consider that at town meeting. And the last one, seventy-four thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars for some improvements over at Heritage Park. There's some recreational facilities that need some sprucing up. And it was so nice, because all the local sports mums and dads came. So that was great. They all support, I think it's soccer and baseball would benefit the most from these. It's just a, it's just some small upgrades, but it was nice to see all the mums and dads come. And I did remind them to make sure they registered to vote and come to town meeting. And also, we had a lot of people come about Asshument Pond. So one, one, one meeting at the CPC, the, the right half was all the sports mum and dads, and to the left was all the Asshument Pond people. The room was filled. It was, I was like, what is going on? Are you sure it's the CPC? But it was great. And Asshument Pond, you know, part of it is in Falmouth, right? And so there was a lot of people from Falmouth, and we had a discussion about, you know, co-funding.
Yeah, what are they saying on that?
Projects, so that's my, I've been delegated to, we're never on the same cycle as they are. And our DNR Director, Ashley Fisher, is adamant that she, she wants this to go forward now. So my job is to coordinate with the Friends of Asshument Pond and, and get them to approach the town of Falmouth for a little bit of kick-in, because this is a three-year project. So there's some monitoring and reporting that they can help with at the end of the project. Whereas we, you know, we can go forward with the alum treatment now, but in out-years is, there's ways that they can contribute.
Yeah.
So they are doing a boat ramp. They, they have a boat ramp, and they are taking care of that cost. So that was, they are doing stuff for the pond, but it might be nice if they contribute a little bit to the alum treatment.
CPC?
That was CPC.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, Charter Review. Charter Review.
Damn.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm thinking, I'm thinking Charter Review. This was CPC.
Charter Review. We've already gone through the Charter once. We're going through it again. And John Miller is our chair, and he drafted up a survey, and it's like seven questions, and it's awesome. So hopefully, hopefully in March, we'll be releasing this survey. So we have consensus on most things, but the things that we didn't have consensus on are going to be on the survey to kind of see what people think. So it's really, it's really a good group. It's really taking this pretty seriously.
What about Debbie Danny?
That's on there. So it has like, it has, it has several committees to see if they should, they should be elected or appointed.
Several committees?
Several committees, like Sewer Commission used to be elected, right?
Oh, yeah.
So there's like a list. Planning Board is not on that list, but there's a list that came up in conversation. Sometimes it was just somebody from the public that said that, and the, and the Charter Review Committee didn't have, really didn't have consensus, you know? So we've got them on the survey.
Okay, good.
I know how you're going to vote.
Oh, a town meeting.
I mean, I know how you're going to fill out the survey, and I think everybody is going to agree with you.
The most important was for me is Debbie Danny. She should be independent from the town.
Yeah.
Because she, she answers everybody's question.
Yeah.
All right, let's move on.
Okay, there is no design review until March nineteenth. Plan review?
Then we met yesterday to review an application for a personal kennel at home. It was approved. The, the, the yard in question was already secured. There have been no complaints by Police Department or the Board of Health. No dog attacks or anything like that. Seven chihuahuas.
Seven chihuahuas.
Yes, indeed. So pretty benign request approved. They still need to go to the Board of Health for their final license.
Remember the kennel with the pit bulls?
So I actually have a question.
Yeah, we, we had like Channel Five down here covering town meeting. It was like unbelievable.
So it was asked of me by the health agent why we have the plan review requirement in the zoning bylaw for a personal kennel license. And I feel like I remember some of you telling me that you had a crazy town meeting about this issue.
Yeah.
Do you, do you remember what it was?
I don't exactly know, but I got to tell you.
There was a kennel right near Pickle Cove there, and they wanted to put, I forget how many dogs and stuff, everybody was upset about it, you know? And they were going to raise, I think it was pit bulls.
If you think back, maybe just, if you, I would be curious to know what your memory is, if one you can turn up relative to.
I think it's, I think it's, I think it's the large dogs that are stereotyped as aggressive.
Okay.
And...
Because most of the personal kennel licenses we, we deal with, there's been maybe three in my six years. They're largely people with a lot of small dogs.
Yeah.
And no structure is contemplated, like they're not erecting any structure on their lot. It's just, they have more than five dogs, so they need to get a personal kennel license.
One of the problems was the noise. They were scared, the barking.
Right.
And they could be outside, you know, during the day. It was, I don't want to hear barking dog, because it was close to a lot of it.
I think another challenge is most of these requests come in after the fact. No one knows they need to get a personal kennel license. And so they, a neighbor complains, or maybe they come to renew their license with the town clerk, and that's how it gets triggered. So most of these, most of the time, these dog owners are, have lived in their home for years with their multiple dogs, and then they have to come in after the fact. and then they have to come in after the fact.
Oh, okay. I think it's a, I think, yeah, I.
There are very few. I mean, most people don't have too many dogs.
It's not to sell these animals. If you have five or more dogs, you have to have a personal kennel license.
Correct.
Just your own pets.
Correct, yeah.
Is it one for cats?
No.
Oh, thank goodness. I only have two.
It was down the street from you, actually.
Last year in my neighborhood, the lady had, I think it was five or six dogs, but nobody knew it was a kennel. And she advertised it online.
She was selling dogs, yeah.
So people found out.
I think we denied that application.
Yeah, we denied it because she lied.
She lied a lot.
Three of the dogs, my daughter has them.
Yeah.
And I have to mind them sometimes for a month or two. It was always after breeding season. If you thought about which was mine and the dog, but they stopped us, he keep three.
Huh.
Interesting.
I'd leave it alone unless you wanna have a lot of people at town meeting.
Yeah, I.
Like, let them just go through cycling and review.
I asked the health agent if he was adamant about this to provide you guys with a memo explaining his rationale. We go from there.
Yeah, I, well, it'll be hotly contested. It might be just better just to let it lie. Sorry, it's more work for you guys, but.
Don't affect cats.
Yeah.
I like that.
No one for the EOC here tonight.
They did meet, that's all I know.
Historic District Commission?
No meeting. Anything coming up, Evan?
Yeah, I mean, we do need to meet because.
Who took Earl? We got somebody to take Earl, please.
I've been working with Earl's son, Chiefy, to try and get Earl formally resigned. And I've asked Chiefy to consider serving on the Historic District Commission. We have new applicants as well who submitted letters of interest, who've been out of town, and I think they're gonna be back in town. So we do need to convene to interview those candidates, to reaffirm the two you've already put forth, because the policy change shifted, and we never got to reconvene. And I am anticipating an application to this board for a project on Main Street, which is in the Historic District, which will require Historic District Review. I will have a conflict on that application. We'll need to recuse myself from it, so we need to figure out how to give you guys guidance on that.
What is, what is the project?
It is, like a plumbing supply company, I think, and ancillary offices. And so I had, those plans have not been filed yet with my office, but I do anticipate them in the near future. And that would require special permit review and Historic District Review as well.
And the parsonage, I see they were tenting it?
I'm not up to snuff on what, on the activity there. I don't know.
And what I know, it's weather tight.
It's weather tight, yeah.
They wanted to make it weather tight. I think there was a little bit of a fire in there.
There was an arson, yeah.
Yeah, a big fire.
And so they went in there and made it weather tight.
Did they do all the preconditions? Are they ready to go forward on this?
I don't have any update from the Travel Historic.
They're a good company there, though.
Yeah, a company I never see here.
Are you going for a DLTA money?
I, well, I don't, I've been thinking about it. I don't know what to apply for. It's like, the only thing I had considered was for the VFW site, after a feasibility study gets done, having like a master plan done of that whole area, inclusive of the adjacent lots that the town owns, but I don't necessarily need another project. You know what I mean? So if there's anything the board wants to consider submitting for, please let me know.
It's just such a short term.
It is.
So that, that state money, I mean, it's through the county, the DLTA money, you get it like in July, and you have to spend it by.
New year.
By December 31st, and it takes you at least six to eight weeks to procure the stuff. It's almost like you'd have to procure it now.
It's very, it's a little challenging.
You'd have to procure it now and be ready to go July 1st when they release the funds. It's impossible.
We shoehorned it in for the HPP, though. Well done.
Yeah.
Years ago, I had to do a, buy stock, I taught this women in construction, and I had to buy, each of them got $300 worth of tools, but the first guy that had it, he just went anybody. And I got everything cheaper and more stuff, but I had like, I think it was $15,000 left over. I almost got fired.
Oh.
They told, you gotta spend all that money, so next year when you get bored, I said, that don't make sense. And they're not real mad at me. They said, go buy something else to spend it. It was like.
Something else that you could use in the future.
Yeah.
That sounds like a smart idea.
Yeah, but they didn't like that, but that's like.
They didn't like that.
That's like the state, though. You have to spend that money.
Yeah.
By the end of the year, you're not gonna get no, whatever you, I don't care.
Okay, I'd like to take a motion to adjourn.
Not tonight. We're staying.
I'm leaving.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, Ed. Thank you.
Good night, Ed.
Good night, everybody.
So, well, let me just ask, what are we doing about February 21?
About what?
We need more people. We need a super majority.
Well, Rob can zoom in.
Is Mike not available?
I think Mike's available.
We need one, two, three, four. We need five people, right? Super majority?
Can you zoom in?
Oh, yes.
On the 21st?
As long as I have a Zoom link.
It will be provided.
Okay.
Should be all right.
Thank you, Rob.
Okay.
And good night.